Thank you, everyone. Welcome back. Administration or committee, any consensus or questions on the land acquisition reserve fund? Well, Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, I see consensus that we go ahead with the purchase of this.
The inclusion of the land acquisition reserve fund?
Yeah, that's fine. And that'd be the yellow circle for later discussion with more details. If or the terms is noted, I prefer. Which means it's tentatively approved, subject to further approval later.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counsel, any further questions or discussion on this consensus? Seeing none, then we're gonna move the consent, see consensus to include the land acquisition reserve fund of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the twenty twenty four budget and to identify it as noted. Counsel? Called a question then? See consensus, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, committee. So, administration, where are we at?
I leave it to committee if you wanted to go through the other capital projects, because they were all presented on. If you would like to go through them one by one, if there's questions or new direction coming up, but I I look to committee to let us know it. I want to do what's in the best interest of everyone's time, if there's no questions.
Okay, so committee, I'm gonna go back to the original queue on the matters we've already discussed. So I have myself, Counsel Reese, Counsel Stashak, and now Counsel Taylor. I do have one against question. I know it's not a huge item, but I do have a question on the sound panels. I wanted to do a little bit of research on it, and my understanding that I could find was the sound reduction panels. It looked like vinyl was the only thing that seemed to be successful. And that's only by ten decibels from what I I could gather. And and a pickleball racket is seventy decibels. And with reducing it to ten, it's down to sixty decibels, and that's like a normal conversation. So my question is, has administration looked into the type of product that we're gonna be getting to get the most effective use of that thirty thousand dollars? Has have we gone into detail that not far yet, or that's my question?
Well, I'll ask the Director to speak on that. Thank you, Director Bo, and through Chair to the rest of the committee. So the answer to the question is that some amount of investigation has been done into options. What we're finding is that there are really only industrial applications to resort to. And further investigation hasn't really been done. You do have a proposed picture there. With that is a suggested sort of application. But before this can, this project can be executed, we'll have to do more research. In particular, I would like to make sure to some degree of what kind of sound mitigation level we're gonna get. This is a lot different than industrial applications, generally speaking. Because it's one wall in between two open areas, and not sure what can be achieved just with that. So we do have some questions about that haven't yet been answered. I also want to point out, if it's all right, that the capital project profile you have today tonight is slightly updated with all of those pickleball association requests in it now, just because that was asked for.
So let me just quick follow up. Yeah, I I I'm concerned that, you know, this project, if it's not the right product in the area, it is, and and more research done on it, that it's not going to achieve what we're hoping for. You know, and like I said, as much as I could find, you know, and and that's why I realized the picture is there. I don't know, that doesn't look like the picture of the vinyl ones I saw on on some of the sites. You know, but there's also the concern, and it showed is the the distance that the courts are from that barrier and it coming over top. And I'm I'm just wondering, I'm concerned as is is it going to achieve? So that's my only question at this point. You know, I'm I'm okay honestly taking a look at this. But personally, I wouldn't want to spend any dollars until we've got more confirmation that it's going to achieve our goal, so. Okay, Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair, I do have a consensus that I would like to request.
Go ahead.
And and that is regarding the sound reduction panel. Jen, it's lengthy. Are you ready? Seeking consensus? So seeking consensus to include the sound reduction panel. Capital project. Okay, contingent on a RFD to counsel. With additional information including stakeholder input. Cost proposals. Durability. And expected sound reductions that we're hoping to achieve. You can stop at reduction. Sir, may I speak to this?
Absolutely.
You know what? Initially, I was gonna take this Oscar consensus to take this right out, and then I'm thinking, you know what? I'll let it move ahead, but there's still so much information that we don't have. I don't want to spend thirty thousand dollars on something that I don't even know if thirty thousand dollars is the number. But it'll cost to put up this sound barrier. I don't know if I'd want to be that person sitting there on my back deck looking at a brown wall. Maybe I'd like to be looking at the sound people to pick a ball. So have we asked the people in the neighborhood, you know, all of them? If, you know, what, if they'd like to be looking at a wall, or would they like to be looking up and playing pickleball? There are so many things in the future that we do not know. So that's why I'm proposing this consensus. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Committee, we now have a consensus. We can only speak to this, please. Counsel Stashak and then Counsel Chambers, into session.
And Mr. Chair, so I guess I have a question for administration. For this consensus request, what would be the administrative time and cost that would go into collecting that information to be able to bring that request for decision to counsel?
Through the chair and members of council. You know, it'll be a very high level, yes, that my Mr. Ju might be able to have more insight on how much research has been done and what else would be needed to do. But I would imagine that this would be a a major hindrance for administration. I think this can be put together in matter of you know, at a having somebody from administration work on this for a day. But that's a very high level, yes. Thank you.
Do you vote? Counsel Chambers?
I I would support Counsel Reese's consensus. I think it's important. It's such a new issue, I think, to communities, and originally I I would have, I would have agreed to remove it, but I do think that I guess my one question is is the pickleball club the one that's requesting this, or is community members surrounding, because it wasn't in the previous discussions? Or is it the community surrounding has sent in a survey or come and present the council, that's that's a part I'm not aware of, but the consensus wording, I I probably get that information.
Mr. Ju?
Thank you, and through the chair, to Counsel Chambers first. There was one resident complaint that was lodged. And Pickleball Association also received that complaint, and they are supportive of some activity on our part to mitigate the noise. So it would come from those two directions now, just clarify one step further, if I may, with regards to the prior question. Because it would be very helpful, and I don't think we can get what we what we need, some certainty, without some dollars spent. So one of the things we did, for example, with the arena sound system upgrade in twenty twenty three was we did a sound study first. So with a little money to get a professional out to take some measurements and give us some estimates of what could be achieved, we'll have a little more certainty. And I think without that prior work, which does cost some funding, we're not going to necessarily get the qualified, the quality data that we're looking for for that part of the question.
Counsel Chambers, to follow up on her question first.
So, yes, thank you. So through the chair, so just my my follow up question would be, so there hasn't been any large scale community surveys or or input that's been asked for, it's just the one complaint that's come from that surrounding neighborhood to date?
Thank you, through the chair and the rest of the committee. It is only one complaint that has come forward. The suggestion was made to the individual to to see what kind of support they could get. Nothing more has come forward. And I will remind committee that there is also a project to resurface the valley courts that is in progress and that will complete in spring of twenty twenty four. That makes sense.
Mr. Mayor, I'll follow up on this.
Yeah, and to the minute, or through the chair to administration, is there any sort of cost estimate with the sound study that you mentioned?
Thank you, through the chair to the rest of committee. I I would like just a small budget for that, let's say five thousand dollars. I think we could probably get what we're looking for with that amount. And if it if it's nuanced, I'd be surprised. And you can start with that.
Okay, CEO, wanna make a comment?
Yeah, through the chair, just just a few comments. One is, I, it is my understanding that only one individual has come forward. But my understanding is that disproportionately it does affect that one individual, because we've had those conversations internally as this one individual, actually, the the majority of his charge is back onto the pickleball courts and the rest are offset from being directly impacted. So we have only, but we have only received one. You know, I I think, you know, if we want to look into this detail, we probably will need to put some funding towards it, but but I think let's, I think we can go back as administration, we can do a review of whatever else might be out there. We'll we'll do us, we'll do a little bit more of an in-depth scan on the documents. And I think we can come back for counsel to see what we can find, just with the available information. If it does require anything further, we could follow up with counsel and that would we could request that at that time, but my hope is that we pound pavement a little bit more, find some municipalities who have tried to try to mitigate pickleball noise. I imagine that quite a few communities are running into this, so. But a little bit more time to to do some more in-depth research and to come back, I think is what we
Okay, thank you, Counsel Stashak.
I have two questions. Really, the first one's really quick. Cost and funding section, it says estimated at thirty thousand, but where is it being funded from?
I think through the committee, this would be an item that would qualify for MSI funding if we went through with it, and that's always our first choice is to look at the available allocation grant. If it was not or if we used the funding for all the other projects and we didn't have it, then it would come from either one speed trails, the recreation reserve. I can never find it quickly when I'm under, looking for it. And and through the committee, as I'm as I'm going through this, once we go to the next section, the capital project plan will come back to you with all the funding sources identified. That wasn't done on this version, because administration was uncertain if there was a change in part and there was other projects not moving forward, so chose to bring the funding in after you'd seen it and we'd gone through this section. So all of those funding questions will be answered on the next version of the capital plan that you see.
Through the chair, by meanwhile, I was looking that up. This one may also qualify for competitive grant, recreation type assets sometimes have these these types of initiatives that you can apply for. So I think that as a part of our as a part of looking into this a little bit further, we can also do a scan and see if there are any grants, competitive grants opportunities.
And then barring that, it would, the only one that is identified for the current allocation of the reserves would be the Parks and Trails Nature Reserve.
Okay, thank you. And Counsel Stashak, you have a second question?
Not really a question, more of a statement, now that I've gotten that clarity, though, I'm a little bit more than in my opinion. I appreciate that MSI funding is available for something like this, but I actually feel MSI funding is better suited to you know, repaving and sidewalk replacement and things like that, rather than a than a sound reduction wall. And the more we talk about this, the more administration is conceding that maybe it does need a little bit more by money and effort put into it than was originally thought, and for me, that makes it tough to tough to support the consensus request that we have before us. I would actually prefer that a bunch more money isn't spent on this. It's only a thirty thousand dollar ask. Anyway, I prefer that committee or council just makes a decision on it, whether it's something that they want to move ahead with or not. I don't want to see another five or ten thousand invested in thirty thousand dollar project. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Stashak. I have myself, and in the beginning, I was gonna support this, because without this, I wouldn't have supported this project based on, you know. But now also similar to hearing that this is not as as simple to to figure out whether or not that area, you know, and there's maybe possibly more money. I don't know, I I'm 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 torn now, because we keep going down this route and the time we put into it, and then whether or not we're gonna even do it or not, so. Yeah, I'm interested here from others. So Counsel Reese, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know what? Initially, I was gonna speak in favor or vote for this too. But now I'm thinking, you know, MSI money, that's precious money. You know, so if we have to you know, take thirty thousand out of MSI, we're doing everything tonight to save money, not spend money. I appreciate what you said, CEO. But five thousand dollars is five thousand dollars, and that might be an estimate, hey? So I feel a little torn. I know it's my motion, I have to speak positively to it, but I don't have to vote for it, so.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Reese, Counsel Taylor, and then Mr. Mayor and Counsel Rea.
I must have missed, heard something different than you guys heard. I heard the town manager say that this was no biggie, we didn't have to spend a lot of money, we could just ask a few questions and come back with a little bit of information for a decision. Isn't that what you kind of said? And you said we didn't have to spend a bunch of money? And and understand, understanding a little bit more about this, you know, like, is the person who wants the noise mitigation know that there's gonna be this brick ground thing sitting in front of him? Like you said, I agree, I don't want to spend five thousand dollars to figure this out. Phone in a few municipalities and say, how are you mitigating this? It's the standard tool. We're using the same standard tool you're using to harness that work. That's the extent to which the investigation would go, and that's what I thought we were gonna do. Were you you thinking they're gonna spend a lot of money to figure this out, or just a few full to the chair, Counsel, oh, you are correct.
Yeah, I don't know, to spend much on this. At least initially, I think we could look into, but, you know, we could do a little bit more investigation, very important part. Detailed proposal on options out there, you know. I think it would require a little bit more research. We could also look at competitive grants that may be available to fund this item. But I I think, you know, I you know, we all, we don't want to invest a lot of time and effort into these types of proposals of council, just as not in favor of the of the idea, right? But I think if we move forward, I think we could confidently say that whatever we look at, it will not solve the problem completely. No sound barrier reduction. But whatever it is, it will help. To what degree, I think we would have to figure that out a little bit more, but but if council's in favor of the concept, we can certainly come forward at another time with some more information possible. Competitive grants, if they're available.
Mr. Mayor?
So I'm actually going to speak against this motion. I think that pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the world, apparently, right now. And as Counsel Chambers mentioned earlier, the this is a new problem that's affecting municipalities right across the board. I read about big cities in the states that are having problems with pickleball sound. And I sit here thinking, this is a brand new sport, it's a brand new problem. There's lots of people with lots of money trying to solve this problem. We should not be in that business. We're a small town in a rural place. This season was a problem. We've got some new courts being resurfaced. Who knows if the Pickleball Association is gonna change their behavior? I worry that we're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars, put up a fence that doesn't really mitigate anything, and the users are gonna move on, and it's gonna be back to something quiet, and we're gonna be looking at this problem down the road. So I'm in, I'm more in favor of hunting this down the road a year, or maybe even two, to see if the technology improves and if the the player behavior, the the association behavior remains constant at this location, or if they they do manage to move on to something that seems better.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Rea?
Yeah, I'd like to flesh out the CAO's recommendation a little bit more. So my question to you, CAO, I fully agree with everything you said, makes sense to me. I I would like to see the pattern of the test. I think especially understanding that we have one citizen who is adversely affected by this. You know, when they purchased their property, they didn't think they were moving next to a pickleball, or they thought they were moving next to a tennis court. The town is, you know, it's our facility, and we have allowed a sport to evolve in that particular area that has impacted their quality of life. I think the onus is on us to try, at least at the very least, to do so. So my question, CAO, is the motion that's on the floor currently from, or part of the consensus that's on the floor currently from Counseler Race, does that, do you see that as facilitating the exploration on administration's part that you were discussing? Or do you see council simply if it's the will of council, simply moving forward, approving the line item as it appears in the budget? And then, you know, perhaps as noted, and it coming back?
Through the chair and members of council, I think it accomplishes the same end. I think it's it's well worded, and I think that gives us clarity on how we move forward. I'm comfortable.
So if I could then speak to it, Mr. Chair, yeah, then I will fully support the direction for the consensus that's on the floor. I think we have a responsibility to explore. Because I think at the end of the day, this is a problem that is not going to quickly go away. And as a growing community, we have to understand what the impact is to our residents. And perhaps what that means is down the road, as we build more facilities or enhance facilities, we have to be aware of the impact that we have on surrounding neighborhoods. So I'll fully support this.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel Rea. Counsel Stashak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I appreciate that administration has a clear understanding of the direction, but unfortunately, I don't. I agreed with CAO and Essex's comments that you know, it it will take a day and a few phone calls and stuff, but then subsequent to that was the request from Director Ju for budget of about five thousand dollars to do a sound study. And that's what I, that's what I don't agree with, and honestly, even kicking this down the road, it's a thirty thousand dollar budget item, I would just rather council made a decision today if this is something I want to see move forward or not. So I would need clarification from administration. If this is supported, is that including a five thousand dollar budget ask? Counsel Taylor, please don't shake your head about asking me. Is this including a five thousand dollar ask for a sound study, or is this simply making phone calls and doing a email blitz to the local residents?
Through the chair, this is not including an additional funding amount or any more investigation. That thirty thousand will be there for that capital project. If we, you know, if we determine that it is required, we would have to come back and request that a piece of that capital would be used for further investigation on some of that. But as of right now, no, that would just be an administrative exercise. Okay, follow up?
Absolutely.
So then with that understanding, that even makes it more doubtful about whether this proposed solution is gonna work or not. Without a sound study to know what's happening there, and whether this is even gonna have any effect, I'm concerned we might spend thirty thousand dollars to put this up, and it's not gonna work.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel Rea?
Well, and I certainly understand the concern about having the right information to know if the project's gonna have an impact, but to be fair, my concern is that at a budgetary meeting, I I don't think there's anybody around the table who doesn't agree with the fact that this is going to have to be fleshed out a little bit more. Really, we're talking about trying to allocate some funding to the budget moving forward. What I've heard administration say is that if they, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if they feel like additional funding is necessary, then they'll come back with a request for decision to reallocate that funding. At this stage in the game, I don't think it's fair to hold administration to a plan of action on a specific capital project that they've acknowledged, you know, needs a little bit more exploration. I think in principle, I'm good with allocating thirty thousand dollars to addressing the sound reduction problem. What I would hate to see is that the consensus fails, that the problem itself is not addressed, because we absolutely want to know the specifics of the plan right now, rather than simply saying we're gonna allocate thirty grand to try and solve this problem. But that's just my concern. I would like to see dealt.
Ready? Counsel Chen?
I'm good with I go with that. I'm going back and asking a few questions, coming back a little bit of work to understand this a little better. I think that's a reasonable thing to do. I don't think we're talking about a lot of work. Going, I I would voting for the consensus.
Thank you, Counsel Taylor. Committee? Anything further? Seeing none, then, we will then call the question and see consensus to include the sound reduction panel CPP contingent on an RFD to council with additional information with the stakeholder input, cost proposals, durability, and expected sound reduction. Committee, all those in favor? All those opposed? Oh, sorry, I was probably there. You're, sorry, let's do that again. Thought we were doing it on here. No. Oh, why is it on there? Thought we were doing more consensus by hand.
Seventy one.
Okay, sorry. All right, so we'll revote, please. We're seeking consensus to include the sound
Sorry, Mr. Chair, are we digitally voting or are we voting?
Sorry, I need some clarification too. This is a consensus that we've done, and the others, I'm not sure why we're voting electronically on this.
Through to the chair, the other consensus on the on the spreadsheet, I we're just consensus on any new additions or any changes to what was on there. This is a completely new one for us.
Okay, all right. So, committee, we will be voting electronically. All right, my my apologies. We'll recall this then, that we're seeking consensus to include the sound reduction panel CPP contingent on an RFD to council with additional information, including stakeholder input, cost proposals, durability, and expected sound reduction. Committee, please vote now. And that is carried four to three with Mayor Neeson, myself, and Counsel Stashak against. All right. So going back to our original queue, I have Counsel Estashak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What it was, it was a question in relation to the matter that Counsel Taylor had brought up at the beginning of the meeting. And unfortunately, I don't remember what that was. Do you recall? Or does the chair recall?
That was on the matter of the three million dollars in the switcher draft. That was the the first thing, Counsel Taylor.
I should have wrote it down. I don't recall what my question was, so that's fine.
Okay. Counsel Taylor, then. Other question on what we've already
Yeah, and the electronic signboard, I guess I had a question. Maybe it's just a clarification thing. Are we fixing out a day's technology in our
Are we fixing out of date technology and replacing it with out-of-date technology? Out-of-date technology, are we completely taking this technology down? And replacing it with a new L E D or? Modern air kind of sideboard?
With the chair to first to me, it's a full re-and-re, replace or remove and replace except for its base. The base has proved to be sound and it's good in its current location. Uh that having been said, the scope of the project will still remain modest. The current fine style is a little bit too simplistic for today's uses. So we won't certainly be um. We need some Cadillac version, and I believe it is a modest replacement and up the up the kind.
So.
So that'll be like a a modern sign that you see, just like the one beside it at the uh uh path of the signs you see in Edmonton. You go right down the street, the. Modern L E D signs, that's what we're gonna get. We're not just gonna get the whole thing put up there with. Things fixed.
No, that's correct.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Committee, uh any other further questions on the capital projects that were proposed to us in the past? Uh either things we've approved or things that were also. Did not see consensus for any. Counselors.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I'm trying to find it. You're the hardest to lift station first, capital, right?
I thought that was operations.
Is that operational?
Yeah. I recall. Uh council, any more questions on the supposed capital? I'm seeing none then. So with that, we will move on to the twenty twenty-four draft operating budget. CEO Panazic.
Uh thank you, Chair. I will turn the volume to fifty-four. It's possible to have a short uh washing break.
You asking for a.
Quite a privilege.
Correct. Could I go to the bathroom, please? Yes, well, we will break for ten minutes and then we can be at. A quarter to six. Please, thank you.